Okay, thank you all for coming. I'll call this special meeting to order at 5:30. For the record, all council members are here with the exception of Julia, who's, I believe, at her graduation from the Leadership Scagit class, so she won't be here tonight. I think we made enough copies. I was hoping to have more people show up, but thank you all for coming. So this is going to be done in a similar fashion to the last question-answer period, with the exception that today we don't have a moderator. So Aaron's going to go over the interlocal agreements at the beginning of this, and then if you have a question, you'll come up to the microphone, state your name for the record, and ask your question. Just like the last time, you get to ask one question and then let the next person. Now, you'll get to ask your questions, but we're going to give people, everybody, a chance to ask theirs before you get five, for example. So keep it in a question format, and I should say that during the city council meeting, there will be a public hearing on this. So that's different. You'll get to come and tell us what you think. So, just so that it's clear, that one is a question-and-answer session, public hearing will be coming during the city council meeting. So it's that. Does council have any questions for me before I kick it off to Aaron to start with the interlocals? Thumbs up. You're leaving, or you got a question?
Oh, you're not going to do that today.
Oh, we'll do that at the city council. So Aaron, to you.
All right, thank you very much, council, and for both the council and the public. We've got copies of this whole section of the packet in the back there that begins with the mayor's memo. It includes an updated question-and-answer section. It then has all three of the proposed interlocal agreements, followed by the, where is it? Followed by the proposed resolution on some bond financing issues, the concept from earlier in the year, and then finally, the facilitator's report from the last big public meeting, and the public process. So I guess I'd call your attention first to the library partnership concept, just on page 125. You'll recall that the concept initially was for the two entities to work together to build a new, bigger library that would be operated by the district. It included a funding mechanism, who would operate it, and certain protections and provisions. So using that as the basis for the work on developing the interlocal agreements, the city, with me, another attorney that we hired, and bond council worked with the district's attorneys to prepare these three interlocal agreements. So I'll just take a minute to walk through each of the three, and then open it up for the questions and answers. So the three agreements are all in similar structure and format. The recitals are the same in all three agreements, and then what some would call boilerplate language, that is, indemnification, survival, dispute resolution provisions, those sorts of things, neutral authorship, filing amendment, et cetera, those are also the same. So I'm not going to take really any significant time on those items. I'm going to focus on the paragraphs that are really intended to implement the concept agreement. So beginning with the library partnership agreement on page 93 of the packet, paragraph two addresses the pre-design process. So what this provision does is creates a process that after these agreements are executed, the two parties will work together to jointly fund a pre-designed process that includes the public and results ultimately in a recommendation to the city council and the district board of a library location, concept design, and budget. The pre-designed process, you can see the purpose is in paragraph three, the funding budget's in paragraph four, the costs would be shared in proportion to the population as identified in the 2010 census, so 41 percent city, 59 percent district.
They're all charged up.
Paragraph four also addresses costs, which is $50,000 without written agreement to exceed that. Paragraph five addresses consultants. The primary consultant is, will be SHKS Architects, which was selected through RFQ process in 2016 that included participation from both the city and the district. Paragraph six addresses the administration of this process, and that indicates that the city will administer the contracts, and the district will pay the city for its 59 percent of the costs. Paragraph seven establishes a joint pre-designed committee. This doesn't have a specific number of members, but it does say that there's parity between the two bodies. So if there are three district representatives, there'd be three city representatives, for example. The purpose of the committee is to engage in that pre-designed process, to be present in the public process, and ultimately to make a recommendation, including the conceptual design budget and location, to both the city council and the district board. So that's part one of the partnership agreement. Once that pre-designed process is completed, and the city council and the district board both vote yes on the recommended conceptual design budget and location, part two then begins. So that creates the effective date for part two. Paragraph eight is the joint operations provision, which says that 60 days following the approval of the conceptual design, location, and budget, the district will begin operating the Cedar Willy Public Library at its location on Ball Street, and will be responsible for all of the costs of operating the library, except for the major repairs to the building, including the exterior envelope, HVAC, and the exterior grounds. So basically, they'll do all the operating costs of the library, plus the building, the ordinary routine building, you know, cleaning and maintenance type issues, but not the exterior envelope. Paragraph nine just deals with reciprocity. Of course, this is about two weeks, I think, into reciprocity between the two libraries. Once there's consolidation, there's no need to have an interlocal agreement that deals with reciprocity. Paragraph 10 addresses the provision in our conceptual agreement we've discussed all along, which is a protection for city library employees, specifically identifies the city's eligible employees, and has the process under which the district would offer and those employees would accept if they so choose jobs with no reduction in pay and equivalent benefits with the district. There's a specific timeframe in there, really intended to allow the district to have certainties. So if a city employee, for example, is offered a job and doesn't wish to accept, there's a time period for the district to know that, so they can go out and cover the position if that's necessary. Paragraph 11 is the city's special historical collection, so I'm on page 95. The way we've proposed to solve the issue of the special historical collection is to maintain city ownership of these books, mark them differently, and put them on permanent loan to the district for the benefit of the public as reference materials. Paragraph 12 deals with the city's collection, and transfers the city's collection to the district, along with the furniture, fixtures, and equipment at the library. The district will also assume the contracts for things like the photocopier, the software agreements the city has, and subscription agreements. So there won't be any dangling costs that the city takes on for agreements that are necessary to operate the library. Paragraph 13 is the parallel to paragraph 12. So on paragraph 12, the city puts its collection in. Paragraph 13, the district puts $900,000 for furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and up to an additional $625,000 for new books. Paragraph 14 deals with annexation, and it specifies that no earlier than November 30, 2032, the city agrees to consider initiating the procedure for annexation. There's a change here from the concept agreement. The concept agreement had the city agreeing to consider initiation earlier. The reason for this change is to address a future condition that we'll discuss later, which deals with the city's debt. Our goal is to not have annexation happen earlier than six years from the last payment of debt, because the district takes on that debt at the point of annexation, and the district's limited to a six-year amortization period for debt. So if annexation were to happen sooner than six years prior to the end of the debt term or the maturity date, the district would have to come up with those dollars at an accelerated pace. And then paragraph 15 is the indemnification provision. It's the same in all three agreements. Paragraph 16 deals with the term, which is a 20-year term. It's intended to be coterminous with the bonds, but the agreement does not automatically terminate, but will continue annually. There's a process to address, you know, extensions or renegotiation. Paragraph 17 is a provision that just indicates which paragraphs in this agreement survive termination of the agreement, in other words, maintain their enforceability. Paragraph 18 addresses the venue for disputes, as well as any conditions precedent to filing the suit. In this case, we've got a, I guess I would call it a somewhat complicated process. You can't just get mad and go file a lawsuit. There's a specific process of trying to work together as fellow public agencies before you can do that. And then really, the rest of these, I'll answer questions on if anybody has any, but they're fairly standard contract provisions. Moving on to page 102, the building joint development and ownership agreement. This agreement becomes effective at the same, at the conclusion of the pre-designed process. So at the point when the two bodies accept that recommendation and vote yes on the design, the location, and the budget, this agreement becomes effective. You can see the purpose in paragraph two is to more efficiently and effectively serve residents by jointly developing and owning the new library building. Paragraph three deals with ownership and possession. So the city will initially own this building, and will transfer 59 percent of it to the district. And that 59 percent will include the power of termination in favor of the city in the event the district is dissolved in the future, and I'll discuss that moment when we get to paragraph 12B. For the term of the agreement, the district will have the sole possession of the premises for the purposes of operating the library, consistent with our agreements. Paragraph four deals with insurance. Paragraph five is the same. Paragraph six is the funding. Six A deals with debt, and it indicates that the city will issue the debt. It identifies the type of debt, and that the bond face value won't exceed $5 million without written agreement of the parties, and includes a maximum term of 20 years. The second half of six A deals with the tax-free portion of the bonds, and it's language that's necessary for the type of bonds that we intend to issue. Six B is the intent to reimburse. This ties into that resolution that's at the end of the agreements. And essentially, what it's saying is that from the point of the effective date until the bonds are issued, which could be six months, or 12 months, or 18 months, we really don't know the exact timeframe, costs that either the city or the district incurs that are toward the building project can be reimbursed from bond proceeds. Six C deals with refunding bonds. This is really just intended to allow the city to potentially refund bonds with a lower interest rate, but to not allow the city to refund bonds with a longer maturity date. Paragraph seven is a new concept from the conceptual agreement to now. It's called the library construction fund. And if you think of this agreement, there are really three time periods when it comes to the capital component. There's the time from when the agreement's effective until the first bond payment is due. There's then the 20-year period from the first bond payment until the bonds are paid off, and then there's the period after the bonds are paid off. What paragraph seven is intended to do is to capture the approximate amount of money that would be going to debt service in the future, capture that today in a fund that can be used towards the construction of the library. So you can see it's a $30,000 a month contribution, beginning on the effective date, and running until the December prior to the first, to the year in which the first bond payment is due. So that's a city contribution of $12,300, district contribution of $17,700. So these dollars will be used for the purpose of acquiring, designing, or constructing the new library. Paragraph eight then is that third period. So if paragraph seven's before the debt service, paragraph eight is after the debt service, it's the same dollar amounts. Those dollars then go into a reserve fund to deal with major construction, or reconstruction, or expansion in the future. Paragraph nine identifies the contract administration. The city is proposed to be the lead entity for this project, and as such, will use the process identified in this agreement to hire the architects, engineers, and other professionals. And this also includes a provision for the city to be compensated for reasonable administrative costs in the amount of 5 percent of the construction contract. Paragraph 10 addresses the design and construction management process. This designates the positions of the city supervisor and the district's director to be the joint owner representatives on this project. And the joint owner representatives are the ones who would be actually engaged in the day-to-day construction management of the project. Because the city is the lead entity, there will be further acts necessary as the project proceeds, for the city council to, for example, budget for the dollars to come in and be spent, delegate authority for contracting for the project, and so on. The intent of this, though, is really to have the project move forward without either the city council or the district board needing to go and, you know, revisit, for example, every change order or anything like that. Once the parameters are set, so long as the project's within the parameters, then it should be able to move forward. Paragraph 11, partition. So the building will be owned as joint tenants-in-common, and one of the ways to get a divorce, if you're tenants-in-common on real estate, is to partition the real estate into two pieces. Eleven says you can't do that during the term of the agreement. Paragraph 12, I alluded to earlier, these are the future conditions, so a lot of concern was expressed about the what-if. You know, what if the city voters vote to annex, what happens? And paragraph 12A says if the city voters vote to annex, then the new library, any dollars in the reserve fund, and everything in the library get transferred to the district, because we are now one legal entity served by the district. It also says that any debt that's outstanding, that the city has in its name, will be paid off by the district, no later than either the final maturity of the bonds, or six years, whichever is sooner. So that language is what I alluded to earlier, is conforming with the district's ability to take on debt. 12B addresses the what-if. You know, what if the district voters change their mind and decide they no longer want a library district, and they go out and petition, and have an election, and delete the library district? If that happens, then the full title to the premises, including what's in it, and the joint reserve fund, transfer to the city at no cost for the city to maintain the library. So there's a specific statutory provision that says that if a library district is dissolved, its assets go to a combination of the county and the state library. The reason why the city is taking title to the building entirely, and then transferring a portion to the district, subject to its power of termination, is to ensure that the district doesn't actually own the ability to have that property transferred to the state or to the county. So that's a mechanism that's very clearly intended to protect the city in the 12B scenario where the district dissolves. And then 13 on are all the same provisions that we've already talked about. So the final agreement then begins on page 113, the library services agreement. This agreement, paragraph one, becomes effective at the same time as the last agreement, that is, when the city council and the district vote to approve the, about 60 days following the city council and the district's vote to approve the design, the location, and the budget. Two identifies the fact that the district will begin operating, and will be responsible for all costs of operating the city library at 02 Ball Street. It, under two B, makes clear that the district will leave the new library, or leave the current library when the new library is built, so that building will be turned back to the city. Paragraph three addresses the library services that are currently being provided, may be provided in the future. And you can see the language at the very end is that, you know, there's, in no event shall the district discontinue providing library services at the new library during the term of the agreement. So one of the challenges with paragraph three is, I think we wanted to draft a provision that said the district's going to do all these things. You know, it's going to have, you know, a room with seating for 50, it's going to have a children's library with 2,000 books, and storytime on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 9:00 and noon, and, but the reality is, we all know in the operations that we conduct, that we really can't be detailed at that level and have an agreement that will be durable for 20 years. So what we've written here is really an expectation of the types of service that will be provided, and the clear requirement that services be provided. And then under paragraph four, that the library services the district offers at the new library and at any of its facilities, whether it's the bookmobile or a future satellite branch, are available to the city residents on the same basis as they're available to any district residents. So it really brings us all together to utilize those services the same way. Paragraph five addresses the cost. The, probably the best way to take a look at that is to flip to the example, which is on page 122. So the city's costs for all three of these agreements continues to be the district's levy rate times the city's assessed valuation, which results in a dollar amount. And the formula specifically is the city's levy rate times the, or excuse me, the district's levy rate times the city's assessed valuation equals the dollar amount minus any of the city's payments for debt. So whether that's a construction fund, bond payments, or joint reserve fund, that results in the contract fee for the library services contract. And that dollar amount is the same dollar amount that you've seen consistently, really from the beginning of this proposal. Any questions from the city council?
So your voice probably needs a break from that. I saw a few people come in late, so let me just remind everybody, this is a question-and-answer meeting. Your questions should pertain to one of those three interlocal agreements, or other things about the library. So we'll have people come up, one at a time, state their name and address if you have a specific question, we'll try to get it answered if not, and leave some information so we can get back to you, because we do want to answer your questions. Then, once this meeting is over and we go on to our regular city council meeting, there will be a public hearing for the first reading of this, of these agreements, and then you get a chance to tell us your opinion. Under the rules, you get three minutes. So there's a distinct separation between questions and telling us what you think. So with that said, I think we're ready for first person. Anybody have any questions on the, on the three interlocal agreements as described by Okay, well, I see one gentleman getting up. Is he getting up for a question? Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and please make sure the blue light comes on. There's a little button there.
Okay, it's on. Tom Peterson, 417 State Street. My concern is, are we going to have our people taken care of, and monies do them for wages?
Thank you, Tom. So that is clearly addressed in the interlocal agreement. We have, and that's been kind of my line in the sand since the very beginning, that our employees would be protected, they would have an opportunity to work for the new combined library, they would not lose any benefits or pay. So Aaron, if you want to direct us to the right section of that, so Tom can see that with his own two eyes, I appreciate it.
It lists the paragraph interlocal, or excuse me, the partnership interlocal agreement, paragraph 10, on page 95 of the packet.
Would you reread that section, please?
Yeah, so what this provision says is that the district agrees to offer employment to, and if accepted, to hire the city's library employees, specifically Deborah Peterson, Teresa Johnson, Mary Anderson, Carol Bomback, and Bobby Jacobson, who are employed by the city upon the effective date. They're known as the eligible employees. Within five days following the effective date, the district will offer the eligible employees jobs with the district, with no reduction in pay and equivalent benefits. If any eligible employee does not accept the offer of employment within five business days of the date of offer, the district will have no further obligation to hire that employee. If any eligible employee fails to accept such offer of employment, the city shall be responsible for the termination process of such eligible employee.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Anderson. I reside at 928 Beechley Road here in Cedar Willy. I have a few questions. Are a few questions permitted, or am I limited to one?
Well, what I'll do is I'll answer your first one, and then I'll see if anyone else has a question.
Okay.
And if not, I'll let you go on to the next one.
Okay. So my first question is, I need to see if I have this correctly. If the ILAs are voted upon and agreed, then irrespective of whether or not we can all agree on what the building should look like, and what should be in it, and where it should be, the ILAs will still stand. Is that right? That's a binding agreement, even if we can't agree on where or what we're going to build?
Oh, the, if the city council and the district board both approve all three of the interlocal agreements, then part one of the partnership agreement will be effective immediately. The other, part two of that agreement and the other two agreements don't become effective until such time as the two bodies approve the conceptual design, location, and budget.
And if they do not?
Then they don't become effective.
The ILAs will not be legally binding?
They would no longer, they would not be effective. So I guess the question is, if they never approve them, what happens? They're not effective. So they never, so these are agreements that are completed, but they're conditioned on something occurring that, under your hypothetical, doesn't ever occur.
Okay, so, so if a bond is voted on tonight for $5 million, and we can't ever agree to what size of library we're going to have, what happens to that $5 million bond?
Well, there would be no bond issuance until after the effective date of the second interlocal agreement dealing with the building joint design, development. So bond issuance doesn't occur till much further down the road, and there's really no scenario where the city council would incur debt without the agreements, all three being fully effective.
And fully effective would... And fully effective would incorporate agreement to part two?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, is there anyone else who has a question? Then, Mary, I give you lead to go to your next question.
Okay. On this joint pre-design committee, will the citizens from Cedar Willy actually be citizens, or will, I mean, who's gonna point that? Who's gonna be on the design committee? I understand the district will take care of theirs, I get that, but the city, how will that be determined?
Well, I don't think we have decided on who those people would be, but it would be--
No, I know, but will it be citizens of the city, or will it be just, can it be anybody to represent the city?
It would be citizens of the city, I think.
Okay, that's good. Well, yeah, okay. Okay, so reciprocity. Sixty days following the effective date, the parties agreed to terminate in its entirety the April twentieth agreement establishing reciprocity between the parties. However, both libraries do not currently have reciprocity with all of the other libraries in Skagit County. So, how will that be affected?
Well, the paragraph nine simply says that the reciprocity agreement between the city and the district will go away because it's unnecessary. So, the, the question I think you're really asking is, if you're a city resident, you can currently go to Burlington and Mount Vernon, will you be able to do that in the future? I don't know the answer to that. I would expect the answer is, not until the district negotiates reciprocity agreements with Burlington and Mount Vernon.
So, the district will take precedence in that situation?
It will be a district library.
I see, okay. Another question I have, and this is germane to the city library employees, I'm not asking on behalf of myself, but on behalf of other employees. It says that there will be no reduction in pay. And my question is, if the new library, or the district-run library, has different hours than are currently available to the staff and to the citizens, there are certain people on staff who can only work evening hours, and if those evening hours are reduced, then those people will in fact be reduced in pay. So, I guess, I guess I'm asking, this, this is not a guarantee, this is just a, we hope so.
Well, what you're asking is, is a guarantee to have a particular schedule, and the answer is no.
Okay, I'm really asking, no reduction in pay?
I don't think you are, because if the rate of pay is equivalent, but the hours are not acceptable to a particular employee, then the offer is for the same pay, but at different times of the day. And this agreement does not bind the district to offer a city employee the exact same shift. It requires that they offer them no reduction in pay.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that, I wanted everyone in the city limits to be clear on that, too. Okay. Okay, so, I did have a question about the city's special historical collection. The city agrees to mark books. At a pardon request by the city, this collection shall be returned to the city, and my question was returned where?
That's wherever the city so chose. That's a protection that was put in there--
Right, I understand the protection, I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm just asking if anybody's thought through some of these things, and I guess the answer is no, you don't know where you would ask--
Well, I can't imagine a scenario where the city would ask for the special historical collection back, personally, but that provision's there in case in the future there's some reason why folks in the city would rather have that collection housed here at City Hall, or at the museum, or wherever they may, may want it to be.
Okay, that's, okay, I just wanted to, to see that. Okay, so, I understand that the city government does not want annexation before 2032, but the city residents can by petition bring forth an annexation vote on, on any given ballot if they follow the proper procedures, is that now correct?
I think that's true.
Okay, all right. Okay--
Mary, can I ask?
Sure.
You were asking about the wages for the city employees and that, and how it might work. Are you talking about their overall monthly, as they averaged out, or are you talking like the hourly wage that they were getting and things with that? So, obviously, if the hour's gonna change by two or three hours a week, yeah, you're gonna have a little fluctuation, but that hourly rate and benefits will stay the same.
Yeah, if the libraries, for instance, if the library is no longer open from four to eight, there are certain employees who can only work from four to eight, and if the library is not open from four to eight, those employees will be taking a reduction in pay.
As you would if we made those changes at the city.
Yes, yes.
But you're asking in pay or in wage?
Well--
Because if they're on an hourly, their hourly wage--
Yeah, we're all on hourly, those of us at the lower level are all on hourly, believe me. Okay, so then--
That will fluctuate.
I did understand, as you were going through these, that--
So, I'm gonna stop you one more time, just to make sure that someone has not generated a question in their mind, so we're sticking with the questions while you have them. Anyone else wanna step up and ask a question at this time? Okay, continue, please, Mary.
Okay, so, on page one oh seven, I believe it was, B, if the district voters approved dissolution of the district, it cannot, is that also, do I also understand it correctly, that if the entire county votes to establish a countywide system, and in that event, this, all the regional libraries will be dissolved? In that event, of a countywide system, then all the assets will come back to the city of Cedar Willy. Do I understand that correctly?
I haven't thought about that scenario, so I'll have to think about that. I think, you know, twelve B clearly says that if, if there's a dissolution, if the voters approve dissolution of the district, it comes back to the city. I guess I would have to read the statutory scheme under which you have that countywide district and what that actually does.
I think that should be considered in these documents, I think that should be addressed, because that's a very real possibility in the next twenty years. I think we're moving closer to a countywide system every day. We've got three regional districts now, it's just a question of time. Don't you, don't you agree?
Well, you know, I'm from La Conner, where we did this before, and we were, we were the entities that were out saying, "Great idea, but no, thank you, because we don't wanna lose our library, because a countywide system would gobble up the district," but it doesn't gobble up cities. So, yeah, I don't know, I, I don't speculate on the countywide vote anymore, it's failed too many times, but I do believe we're moving closer to a countywide system by agreement, and I, I think that's actually the more likely scenario, is that we'll see, in a library alone, we'll see seamless reciprocity through cooperative agreements between the different entities that run libraries in the future, before we see countywide.
But don't you think that countywide should be addressed in these documents, in the event that it does happen? Do we need to have some provision for it?
Yeah, I don't, I'm gonna look at the statute and think about that.
Okay.
I mean, I think you could take that, the next step, you could say, maybe the state would do it, maybe the federal government, I mean, and you could go forever on that and the supposition.
No, no, it's specified quite, quite accurately in the revised code of Washington. There's provision for it in the revised code of Washington, it's already established and, and set forth, laws governing, you know, regional libraries and what happens in a, in a county when we have a countywide system. It's already in place. Okay. All right, I guess that's all I have right now, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary? What do we got? Okay, anybody else have a question? Yes, ma'am?
Robin Gillis, Jamison Street, Cedar Willy. I'm so confused about where the money's coming from for everything, 'cause I was reading the frequently asked questions document, updated June seventh, and the budget for the library for 2017 was three hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred and amended to three hundred sixty-three thousand, not including administrative costs, blah, blah, blah. And then down in A three, it says that the annual total budget is three hundred twelve five hundred, which is quite a large decrease. And then on B one, it says sixty-one thousand two hundred and twelve per year is the difference in cost approximation. And then in B six, it says they're basing the money to be borrowed on the amount of three hundred fifty thousand. And so, the budget of three hundred twelve plus the cost difference of sixty-one thousand is three hundred seventy-three thousand seven hundred and twelve, and I keep hearing, we're borrowing five million, which is based on three hundred fifty thousand a year that the library spends now. And then in part B ten, it says thirty thousand a month will be put into a library construction fund, which will increase funding available for the project. So, I wanna know where all this money's coming from, because none of these numbers add up. And three hundred fifty thousand was the original number I always heard that will pay for a five million dollar bond at a certain percent of interest rate. So, I don't want an increase in my taxes, so I just wanna know where all this extra money's coming from.
Okay, thank you.
So, excellent question, the, so, a couple of them do add up. If you start with A three, you get that--
Aaron, where, where is A in here?
Oh, on page eighty-five of the FAQ, FAQ, page eighty-five, so, I know it sounds like we're playing Battleship, but on A three, at three hundred twelve thousand five hundred, if you take that and add that to B one, you do get the amount that is represented in A two. So, three twelve plus sixty-one equals the three seventy-three. And the difference then between A one and A three, that is the, the three forty-nine nine, or the three sixty-three, and the three twelve, is, A one tells you what the adopted budget is for the library fund, fund one oh five. So, the original adopted budget was three hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. The amended budget, which included some donations, brought it up to three hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred fifty-one, but within that budget is a cash balance that we carry over from year to year to provide cash flow. So, when something, when a payable is due, we can pay it the day it's due, not waiting for revenue to come in. So, that's the difference between that number in A one and the three hundred and twelve, is the actual amount of money expended each year. So, what I'm trying to say is, the amount of money spent on the library is less than the amount of the budget, because the budget includes some amount of cash that stays in the fund year after year. And to give the most accurate information to the city council and the public about what will this cost, that information has to be in there. So, the three twelve is the budget minus the cash, and that's how you end up then with that sixty-one thousand two twelve, which is the amount of money that it will cost in addition to what we're currently spending to be part of this partnership. The three hundred fifty thousand dollar, that number has been pretty much stagnant from the get-go, and that's an estimate of bond costs, that hasn't changed. The thirty thousand and the three hundred fifty thousand and the three hundred and seventy-three, those aren't additive, they're all within a single number. The maximum amount the city pays is the formula, which is the district's millage rate times the city's assessed valuation, which this year would be that three hundred and seventy, three thousand dollars, or three hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. That will change every year. And one of the core tenets of this concept from, from day one is that the city would pay exactly the same as what the district's residents pay, and that's where that number comes from. So, I hope that's helpful to you.
And, and Robin, I would just say, 'cause I know it's hard to keep up with numbers going out like this, this is all being recorded, and you will have, the public will have access to the recording if you need to go back and kinda slow it down and write on a piece of paper so you understand it.
Right, but how, how do we have to pay as much as the counties, well, the rural is paying, if it's supposed to be fifty-nine, forty-one? I, I thought we were supposed to pay less, because we have less cents.
All right, so, you're, you're thinking of the provisions for the capital, so the building itself will be owned in that proportion, and the contributions to that building, for example, in the construction fund and the reserve fund are in that proportion. But the overall amount the city is spending under this agreement is the same rate, so it is significantly less than the district. It's actually not forty-nine to fifty, or fifty-nine to forty-one. I think the district's gonna be spending probably more like two dollars fifty cents for every dollar that we spend, their budget's closer to a million dollars, to our three hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Right.
So, it's, you know, just to make that clear, we're paying the same rate, you know, that, that's what's the same. So, if you own a house in the district, what you as a taxpayer pay is the same as what the city would be paying for you in the city, it's just the city's paying on your behalf, whereas a district resident is writing that check directly to the library district each year.
Okay, so, you're saying, I'm not paying the same as the district?
Same rate.
I'm paying the same rate, but the total dollars are less.
It's a difference.
We're not giving them the difference between, they're putting in eight hundred thousand and we're putting in four hundred thousand, we're, we're not paying eight hundred thousand, we're paying what we're paying.
Right, it's the reverse. The city's, you know, if you look at this year's budget, the city would be in at three hundred seventy-three thousand, and the district's overall budget's about eight, eight hundred twenty-five thousand.
Okay, but since we haven't merged together yet, why does that matter if they're paying more for their library usage than we're paying for ours?
Well, I'm not saying that it matters, I'm just trying to answer your question about the relative costs going in.
Okay, so, we're not, no, we're never paying a difference that's going to make us pay the same amount of money?
Well, so, it's theoretically possible, if somehow the city experienced massive growth, you know, we, we got, you know, I don't know, Costco came to town and several thousand luxury homes were built, and our assessed valuation equaled the district's assessed valuation--
Right.
Then the amount we pay would actually be the same as what the district residents pay. So, the formula changes, and it depends on, on the tax evaluation, the tax assessment in any given year. So, I, I think it's unlikely, you know, it certainly has not been our history--
Right.
I guess from the city's perspective, I, you know, I hope we do have great fortunes in the future, and we see that dollar value go up because our city becomes more prosperous than it's been in the past.
Okay, and is there, do you know when we will know actual numbers on any of this stuff? Like, how much money's actually gonna go into the project, how much, how big the building is gonna be, you know, where, where the location is? When will we actually get to know that?
So, the city dollar amount is a formula that, if this were in effect this year, that is the actual number. And we'll know what it would be in 2018, when we get the numbers from the assessor's office towards the end of 2017. In terms of the actual cost of the new library, that happens at the end of the pre-design process. So, if the city council and the district board approve these three agreements, and that would happen potentially in July of this year, I could imagine the pre-design process wrapping up in October or November of this year. So, that's when that information for the new library proposal, that is the size of the budget, the concept design and location, would be known.
Okay, and is the public going to have any input about any of that stuff?
Yes, so, the architects will have, I'm thinking back to what we had in our agreement with them, I think we've got two, two specific meetings that are intended for just the public process, and there'll be other ways for public to provide input to the architectural team about those elements of the project. So, yes. And then ultimately, the architects come out with a report, you know, that says we've been in the community, we've talked to the citizens, we've talked to library patrons, we've talked to stakeholders, and here's what we're, what we are recommending, and that's what the committee then takes to the council and the board, so--
Okay, and none of this will happen, like, if I'm correct, this is public forum number three?
Correct.
And there will be another one July twelfth or something, I read. And there will be another one July 12th or something, I read. But we won't have the architects present at any of those meetings, it's--
That's correct.
Not gonna happen till later. And then the architects will give us another public forum?
Two, at least two public meetings. Two additional public meetings beyond those four that you're talking about from the city council's public participation resolution.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Going once, going twice. So, I will close this meeting at 6:20. Thank you very much. And city council will convene at the normal time. Council, you have any last minute things before the gavel drops here? Thank you all for coming, appreciate the questions. Nicely done.